I now call to order the October 17, 2016 meeting of the New Caney Independent School District Board of Trustees at 6:30 PM. Let the minute show that a quorum is present with all members in attendance. Please rise for the invocation to be given by Mr. Turner and remain standing for the pledge allegiance and honor of the Texas flag to be led by Mr. Moro.
Please bow. Dear Lord and Father, we do thank you for this wonderful day you have given us. We ask you to keep our handovers as we go through this week. We ask that you keep your handovers as we make decisions tonight. And we ask you to keep your hand over our district, our employees, our administration, and our students most. We do thank you and love you and praise you and use you never again.
Amen.
This is fire, please. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
It's been seven years.
Item two on the agenda is recognitions. We have three recognitions. First up will be Minister Pearson.
Good evening, everyone. We've got, I need this on or yeah, we don't have it on. We've got six recognitions we're going to do tonight, three students and three employees. I'll start with the students first. Our first one up is Roberto Trivia. Coach Whitty gave a quote for Roberto, says he's a great kid. He does anything that's asked of him. He plays hard, he gets 110% all of the time. He is polite, conscientious, and a leader of other students. He's always helping his teammates. He does extra running after practice even though he's not being punished. Okay, up next I have Ty Trout. He's our career technology student being awarded. And his act teacher, Randy Barso, has this to say about him. Ty shows pigs and steers. He's also thinking about running as a student officer in the junior FFA organization. And he's a member of the livestock judging team. He is polite, respectful, and does a great job with anything that you ask him to do. Good job, Ty. Up next is our fine arts. By the way, I wanted to mention Roberto, the first one was our athlete, was our select student athlete. Our fine art student is Nafisa Zaman, and her band director, Dale Rushing, had this to say about her. Nafisa is an amazing young lady who has never missed a concert. She is disciplined in her practice and in her approach to her instruments. She plays a flute and is amazing. She will be going to the region competition this fall. And last year, she was part of the sixth grade honor band and the winner of the sixth grade excellence award. And our teacher being recognized tonight is our art teacher, Colleen Cardenas. I quote myself on this one because I didn't have anyone else to call. So, Ms. Cardenas teaches beginner to advanced art at KCMS. Her teachers are inspired by her example and therefore spend a great deal of their own time perfecting the tasks that they have been taking. She teaches her students the techniques required and then lets them choose how to develop their interest and understanding. Her students enter and win awards in several contests here, including base and roadie art. Now, our cafeteria manager, Lori Day, has this to say about Joyce Salinas, who is our child nutrition employee being recognized. Mrs. Salinas left the private sector and came to Kever Crossing at the end of the school year last year. She is an integral part of the school and the community and is always willing to help anybody. She can take on her job and another's job at the same time, and she always has a smile on her face. She is a nurturer, came here to work with kids, and our school is a better place for her. Okay, and finally, the last person that we recognize tonight is one of our Kever Crossing custodians, Paula Chapman. I got this quote from Brenda Greathouse, the principal secretary who deals the most with our custodial staff. Paula is an afternoon custodian at Kever Crossing Middle School. She's a hard worker and is always willing to do whatever needs to be done to give the teachers and students a good environment. She's always early, and this is critical. She is the one that the teachers request, the teachers request that Paula be the one to take care of their rooms.
Mr. Applegate.
Good evening. It is my honor and a great pleasure to introduce seven individuals that we'll be giving out awards to tonight. We'll start off with our students as well, with our student of the month, and that is Elizabeth Allen. He was noted by Elizabeth Allen's nominee, nominator, which was Mr. Aldous Velavante, our tech systems teacher. Elizabeth is incredibly pleasant to meet, her positive attitude, and willing to support her in class. And he looks forward to her taking on more leadership roles as the year unfolds. Next up is our fine art student of the month, and that is Casey Tangier. Casey was nominated by Ms. Amy Hanks, the head of this NCMS art department. Ms. Hanks noted that Casey has an excellent and consistent work ethic, does incredible projects, great in academics and attitude. One of the most frequent comments when noted that Casey would be receiving any award, they asked, well, which award would she receive? Because there were so many, she should be on this. Our third student couldn't be here tonight because he's actually doing what he does very well. He's a student athlete of the month. We were fortunate enough to pick up an additional game during our bye week, so he had a chance at the last minute to go out there.
You are undefeated, right?
That is correct. Just like last year. But I'll read the description for Trey Galban. This was put out by our student athletic director for boys athletics, and that was from Coach Elliott. He talks about Trey as being the B-team leader and quarterback of the team. Essentially, long story short, says he does not know the meaning of the word ego. He just does hard work all the time. So that's Trey Galban. We'll make sure to recognize him in school as well. For our employees of the month, first up is child nutrition employee of the month, Crystal Strater. Ms. Needham and I had an opportunity to share, and we talked about the Strater as being the kind of the wake-up caller, the first email of the day. She does a great job of making sure to get the day started off right. She's kind of the alarm for me. That's what wakes me up, is her emails. That's a testament to her, not how late I get to school. That's just how early she gets there. Great job, incredibly dedicated to the staff, to the kids, and is very flexible in everything that she does. So we appreciate that, Mr. Strater. Next up is our teacher being recognized, that is our sixth grade math teacher, Ms. Katie Burgess. Ms. Burgess was a brand-new teacher to us last year, rookie teacher. And we noted right away, already a veteran teacher in everything that she did. Great teacher all around. She is also our cheer sponsor at school, operates like a veteran teacher, sound judgment, high expectations, and great building rapport with our kids. Great job, Ms. Burgess. Next up to be recognized is our custodial employee of the month, and that is Mr. Harry Cozine, our head custodian. Mr. Cozine, what can I say? He extends beyond his duties. One of the things that I'll note is he adds so much more safety and security to the building just by being visible, being around, being everywhere he needs to be. One of the things I'll also say about Mr. Cozine is he understands what it means to be in the position we're in as principals by feeding us information. You don't have to go find Mr. Cozine to find out what's going on. He'll come to you and let you know. So we appreciate that. Last but certainly not least is our transportation employee of the month, Ms. Patricia Yeager. Ms. Yeager was nominated by Mr. David Saul, our assistant principal that works with transportation. Mr. Saul noted that Ms. Yeager, oh, she does one of our, she does our second bus run, right? You do that second bus run, correct? So she does double duty every one. She does one trip with kids and then does another trip as well, too. That itself is enough, a reward, but he also wanted to make sure that he noted is the epitome of heart and head, meaning she works great with the kids, reaches out to them, but also high expectations from the kids, too. Very flexible and willing to adjust to any of our needs, and we appreciate that so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Yancy.
We have, at the September meeting, our August meeting, y'all approved for the Skills USA. Students from Porter High School go to the Washington Leadership Institute. You ask if they can come back and do a presentation, so they asked if they could do it at this one. I told them, try to keep it under about 45 minutes.
All right.
I wish you'd be a little clearer. Do you have any microphone?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay. Sounds like they got it under control, so I'll turn it over to them.
Good afternoon, everyone. We are just six of the representatives that got to attend the Skills USA Washington Leadership and Training Institute in Washington, DC. Here is a picture of the members from all over the US, from different states, Texas, Maine, New York, just everywhere. And we all got to get together on Capitol Hill to advocate for career and technical education.
Hi, everyone, good evening. My name is Vetsan Estrada. I am Skills USA Texas State Secretary for the state of Texas. In this picture, as you see, is a majority of the Skills USA Texas State Officer team. Six out of seven of us are here in this picture, but in total, seven of us individuals, high school students, represent approximately 17,000 students across the state of Texas. And here, we are advocating for career and technical education. We had the opportunity to meet with Ted Cruz's representatives, as you can see, to advocate for CTE courses, to advocate for the students who don't really have the opportunity to become something that they would have been able to become. But because of Skills USA and because of the opportunity that the board of directors give us, we were able to go and have this opportunity.
Here is a picture of us standing in front of Ted Cruz's office. We once again like to thank the board for giving us the opportunity to not only advocate for CTE, but to make our voices heard within the office. It's beautiful to know that our voices were heard in Congress when the Perkins Act was passed the next day. So that was a really amazing opportunity to be a part of because Perkins Act is what funds career and technical education. And us having the ability to give our voice really makes a difference. So thank you very much for all the support.
Hello, I'm Frank Rose and I'm a member of the Skills USA Criminal Justice Club at Porter High School. And here we're standing in front of the US Capitol. And a lot of leaders have walked these steps, and each one of us hope that go back and walk these steps. But this time, not as students, but as leaders, knowing that we achieve our goals and we became hope one of them. And I just want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to go into this experience. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Diana Martinez. I'm from Porter High School, and I am currently in the Skills USA Medical Program. And here, we were taking a picture in front of George Washington's house on Mount Vernon. And letting that sink in, like being there was impactful personally for me. We got to visit where George Washington lived, where he went into his office at 4:30 o'clock in the morning and started his day planning how he was going to run the entire country at that time. You know, like having that and feeling that and seeing how these leaders were. And that just left us with that feeling of how we want to be as leaders and how we want to grow and how we want to be in that position one day where the leadership gives us the impact to other people. And we, you know, like other people listen to us because of the leadership skills that we gained from Washington Leadership Training. And that was a very impactful moment for most of, for all of us there. And that was a very, very impactful sight that we visited.
Hi, my name's Raina Mendoza. I am a Porter High School student, and I'm currently in the medical science field. Apart from all the experiences the Washington Leadership Institute gave us, another added bonus was the opportunity, amazing opportunity, to attend Johns Hopkins University or to have a tour. And for those of you who don't know, Johns Hopkins University is the nation's number-one university in research. And personally, it's a school I'm very, very much interested in. And so to be able to tour it, it reminded me that there are multiple higher education opportunities out there.
My apologies, I forgot to introduce myself. I'm Lizette Moreno. I currently serve as the Texas State Secretary. And we also got to visit Georgetown, and it was absolutely incredible to go to this campus. I personally want to become an attorney, and I never imagined that I would have the opportunity to dream of going to such a big school. And Mr. Nahara, our advisor, gave me the opportunity to hands-on see the teaching and see everything that is there. And now I know that I am capable of reaching all these goals. And this is thanking to the support that we get from the school board, from our principal, Dr. H., from everyone who gave us an opportunity to go to Washington and live out our dreams.
Here is a picture of the changing of the garden. Personally, I've only seen, I've only witnessed this through YouTube videos. As a member, as a cadet in AFJROTC, we would study these videos during March and whatnot. But being able to actually witness this, changing of the reef, some of our members, the national officer members, who represent around 372,000 members of Skills USA across the nation, they actually got to walk on those steps and place that reef. I mean, that opportunity is something that you would never imagine, something that we wouldn't have without the approval with the board of directors, without our principals, without the approval of certain people. And with that, we are forever grateful because that's for us right now, a once-in-a-lifetime thing. But hopefully, in the future, we will retain.
In this picture, you see some of the Texas State Officers with Executive Director of Texas, Janet Connor. Who is she, most of you are asking? She is the person in charge of making sure everything at Skills USA Texas runs how it's supposed to be. Now, because of our learning with networking and connections with important corporate investors like you see in that picture, we have opportunities to get recommendations, get people to help us, get the internships, get the positions in the corporate organizations we want to be in. So it's a really great stepping stone in order to network, how to speak to people, how to make sure that you are putting the right foot in the door.
Something else that the Washington Leadership Training Institute offered is the National Statesman Award. And this is a award that tests you on your knowledge, our people-to-people skills, Skills USA knowledge, and how a democracy works. Some of the things that were required of us were writing two papers, answering multiple questions, creating a brochure over promoting career and technical education over the course of just three days. And I am proud to announce that all of us representing Porter High School and New Caney ISD received the National Statesman Award.
Hi, everybody, my name is Jake Wilson, and I am a student at Porter High School. I am an officer in the Criminal Justice Club. And career technical education has, career technical education has given us opportunities to create stories, to tell and leave an impact. Each of us here have stories that we got to leave. There was 300 to 400 kids in DC leaving an impact and leaving their stories for Congress. There is 370,000 kids just waiting to get a chance to leave their impact and leave their stories, leave a mark. With all of this, we would like to thank Ms. Yancy and Dr. H. for letting us up here and give us our story, our half of our trip. And thank you for supporting us all.
I would like to introduce Ms. Clark and Ms. Mahera. They're the two of the instructors. With them, they do a fantastic job. We stole both of these teachers from industry. And so they brought their knowledge in there for that. The thing that you need to realize, and it surprised me when I was a teacher, let me ask you all this. How many of y'all was the first time that you went out of the state or ever flew on this trip because of this? So all but two of them. The other two, did you, first time you flew or went out of state was it because of a school field trip?
Yes.
Yes, so everyone up there, the first time they left was because of y'all. It will surprise you how many students all across the state really doesn't travel a whole lot. And the only time they get to see other things in the world is through programs like this. And we appreciate everything that y'all do for them. So if y'all'd like to shake these folks' hands.
If you ever wondered why seven people would take a job that pays nothing, that's why right there. That's about the best example you'll ever have of them. Well done. Item three on the agenda is consideration of out-of-state field trip for Porter High School DECA. Mr. Yancy.
Mr. Booth is with us. He's one of the sponsors for the DECA, the marketing end at Porter High School. It's a national DECA event. And this is a field trip, so we're not paying for it. The students are going to pay for their own way. The only thing is we have to add your permission. But I'm going to let Mr. Booth tell you what the kids are doing. And again, this is set up for the national DECA organization, some things that they're going to get a chance to do. And tell them where you're going and all that.
DECA has every year a New York experience. They're very big on developing innovative entrepreneurs. With New York, they get a chance to meet with some of the best in products in the world. They'll meet with marketing executives from Macy's, sales reps from Madison Square Garden, NBC Studios, meet with people in the financial business, go all over New York City and meet these people that make some of the biggest organizations in the world run. They'll learn from them, they'll speak with them, they'll get to do little competitions with them and just develop themselves as future modeling businessmen and women, but leaders. DECA is very, very big in developing 21st century skills, and that's exactly what they're going to get here in New York.
We do try to do as many real-world skills as we can. And so that's why we're asking permission for them to go, again, on an out-of-state field trip. The kids are funding their own way.
Any questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip for Porter High School DECA?
Absolutely.
Motion has been moved in second. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion is approved. I'm what you call a lame duck. Item four on the agenda is open forum. We have no one signed up for open forum tonight. Item five on the agenda is closed meeting. The board will now meet in closed meeting under the authority of Texas Government Code Section 551.074 for the purpose of personnel matters, Government Code 551.071 for attorney consultation, and Government Code 551.072 for deliberation regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Any action as a result of a closed session, discussion will take place after the board reconvenes in open meeting. The time is 6:54 PM. The board ended its closed meeting at 8:01 PM and will now reconvene in an open session. Item six on the agenda is reports that propose to the board members. Do we have any? Yep. Item seven on the agenda is superintendents report.
Start out with Mr. Gates.
I'll tell you, our bond work is going very well. Get my list. Start off, New Caney High School, still under design, it's about 70% complete. We're just working on finalizing the life cycle stuff. We're out of the budget. New Caney Middle School, 60% complete with that. Same kind of process, we're on three, we've got floor plan and design. And then we're doing a fine arts addition there, a new kitchen, and then kind of just doing a lot of renovation work, life cycle, new central plan, something like that. So that's going on schedule. Elementary school, number 11, we're still in the process of purchasing the property on that one. Hope to come and finalize that here in the next couple of weeks, and we can move on with getting that put out there by February. We've got a couple of little pictures here with you, sure. Projects under construction. There's our fire centers. You can see I've got all the walls up. They have to kind of sit for another 30 days before, cure very well before we can start backfilling and fill that up because we certainly don't want to create cracks in the walls. This is the new elementary school replacement break. It's moving along pretty well. You can see that's the classroom end, that's the other end. We've finished with the foundation, structural steel is probably about 90%. This is King's Manor. We have the front of the school along the front road there. We replaced and fixed up and widened it with the bus stop off. So that'll be done in the next three or four weeks, we can start getting buses off the road. That's that part right there. We started the paving, and on the backside of the school, we're getting ready to start doing the foundation work out there. We discovered existing gas lines, electrical lines, so unfortunately, that's with energy. So we have to work with them to get that moved, and they're not very quick. At the high school, our three groups, the Griffin and the King's Manor roofwork is complete. This is at the high school, probably about 20 minutes, it'll take another four or five months. This is Porter High School. The structural steel is all complete. That's the cave addition. We're working on the roof. That's a little bit closer up, cave. That's the classroom side of it, the front of the school, tennis courts, that's the additional stat parking. It'll be ready to re-strive. And then the tennis courts, again, we're waiting for that concrete to clear before we can do the final slab, tensioning and put the fence up. And that's what we've got going on. Got any questions?
We're going to move item 13 up on the agenda. Item 13 is a bond financial report presented by Mr. Doug Witt.
Okay, good evening. Thank you for the hospitality with that. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Came from another board meeting tonight, had it in front of their agenda, and we appreciate the opportunity to present. I'd start by saying thank you to the culinary group. They cooked dinner and fed me tonight, so I'm feeling real good. So I appreciate that. I do have a quick presentation, a quick update. We're right in the middle of our bond program. Thought it'd be a good opportunity to give you a brief update of where we are with that. And then from there to, you know, we'll be back in maybe December or January timeframe with the next sale and issuance of bonds. So... Okay, so I handed the presentation out. I don't think it made it to the screen correctly. There we go. Okay. So on the first page there, you'll see the pre-election planning that we did. Have to get my glasses on. So there were numerous bond scenarios that we presented to the committee back in the planning stages of the bond election. bond capacity plan and so forth. So various scenarios that were utilized. The second bullet point that you see there, in the January 2015 meeting with the Long Range Facility Planning Committee, the two scenarios that were presented at that was a five-year growth model at 5.5% per year of growth rate in student count and in tax base, and it produced about $150 million of bond capacity. We also had a five-year growth model at 7% per year growth rate, again, your average daily attendance and your net tax reassessed value, and that produced 180 million of bond capacity at that time. And then if you flip to the next page, the 2015 bond election and bond model was 173 million. And so it was, again, a five-year growth model through 2019 slash '20 fiscal year for the tax base and 2020 slash '21 for the average daily attendance. It was a three-year bond issuance model, even though there was five years of growth built in, it was a three-year issuance through 2017. We still have 83 billion of authorized but unissued bonds that we have not yet issued. And then the third bullet point there, the tax reassessed valuation growth was assumed to be 7% per year, which would produce about 3.84 billion in 2019, '20 fiscal year. The average daily attendance was assumed, again, at 7%, that puts you at about 18,000 of average daily attendance in 2020 slash '21. And then we did use this excess INS fund balance, because your prior bond models have always outperformed what the assumptions were, you had this accumulation of excess INS fund balance over time. And the only thing we can use that for is repayment of principal, and so we had the planned use of that as part of that overall bond program. And so you had 6 billion, the planned drawdown was to 2 billion. So that's kind of the baseline of what our model was. The current status is on page four there, the next page. The current status of the bond program is, again, in 2016, when you looked at that model, it was a $3.1 billion tax base assumed. Today, in 2016, '17, we're at 3.5 billion. So we're slightly ahead of schedule with respect to the tax base and the assumption. The second bullet point there, the bond model assumed an average daily attendance in 2016 slash '17 of 13,739. We're currently in an average daily attendance range of about 13,645, so we're slightly under that assumed growth. And again, I think you're using about 6.3% of average daily attendance growth in this year's budget. Again, that model was 7% assumed growth rate, and those are within the parameters that we've worked with. And again, you have a new demographic study, which is a part of the reason why we wanted to come back today and talk about, because you're getting additional demographic data of this continued growth, and the time is, okay, we're finishing up, we're in the middle of our current bond program, when's the next bond program coming, when are the next facility needs and so forth. So we've got a lot of work to do to merge those two. But the status update here on the third bullet point is, we are right in the middle of the excess INS fund balance drawdown, we're perfectly on the schedule there. And the last bullet point, of the 173 million approved by the voters, we've sold and issued 90 million. Richard's given you the, obviously, we updated the projects that were financed with that. We have 83 million more to issue. We're likely to be issuing that in the first quarter of 2017. That dovetails with the construction draw schedule on the first 90 million that you 've issued. I think if you look at kind of the planned drawdowns, that money will last until April or May. So first quarter issuance of this balance will then replenish your construction fund so you can have continuity with your construction projects as you go forward. And that's exactly as we planned back with the bond election, this is an issuance through the year 2017, so we're right on the schedule. The next tab, or excuse me, next page talks about the outlook for the bond program. Again, the first bullet point there is key, we are on target with exactly what we were talking about. You have the full ability to issue the 83 million balance that was approved by the voters in the near term. Right now, the preliminary estimate is we will probably issue the full 83 billion in the first quarter of 2017, although we can issue that in portions, we're likely to replenish that, because I think your projects, as they go out, will take that money through September of 2018. So issuing it in '17, you have a very, pretty short period of time in which to spend it. A lot of times, we're looking at two and three and four years type timeframe of spending that money. So anytime we're within a year and a half of spending that money, we look at probably one issuance of the remaining balance. The 83 million, though, will be structured with continued assumed growth in your average daily attendance and in your tax base, so it's a continuous model of growth. In other words, if we thought we were gonna flatten out today at ADA, and we thought we were gonna flatten out today in tax base, we would probably break that 83 million up and issue it in installments. But because you have this continued growth, it's very evident, when you drive into town, drive up and so forth, you can just see what's taking place with your tax base and so forth. There will be the continued assumption of that. So again, the in red there with the planned three-year issuance of bonds from the last facility improvement plan through 2017, the next bond election is presumed to take place in 2018. So the last election was to issue bonds in '15, '16, and '17, and then at that time, it would be another evaluation of your facility needs going forward, another evaluation of the growth assumptions that we want to make. You have a new demographic study that helps us in preparing our bond model, and then that's kind of when your next bond capacity will come into play in order for you to take on the next generation of facility needs. So that process, we're right on the cusp of planning for what will take place in 2018. We do have, again, the last installment to sell here in 2017. Now, you can always vote bonds well in advance of the actual sale and issuance, but for a district where we're selling the last 83 million, we're turning the corner to May of '17, with May of '18 kind of being our first kind of bond capacity in this model, it's probably beneficial to you to get one more year of crystal ball on those growth assumptions, the planning assumptions, the facility needs, and have us merge the bond model with the facility assessment, and at that time, you'll be one more year into the projects that you're completing up as part of your overall facility plan. But if you wanted us to move forward and say, hey, no, we wanna have a May '17 election rather than May '18, even though 2018 is the next bond issuance, we certainly can move in that type of speed. But again, I think it's gonna benefit you to have one year of crystal ball in May of '18, because that's when we can sell, and the new voter-approved bonds would be in the summer of 2018. That money would go into your construction fund to complete projects going forward. So I think the projects that you're building right now is, again, if September of 2018 is the timeframe to finish those up, you're finishing up all of those projects previously approved by the voters, as you're asking them to approve additional financing for additional projects for the facility needs that you have.
What are the parameters you guys use on the growth rate when you're developing your model? Just makes sure we're staying within. Do you have a high and a low on the growth rate that you do in your model?
Well, it depends on the district. And this district will have a completely different set of growth assumptions, low end, high end, than any of our other districts. You are, if not the fastest growing, one of the fastest-growing districts in both tax bases and students. We have, we've got, you know, four metropolitan areas in the state of Texas. We can find similar type districts to you in the Austin area, the Dallas area, the other parts of Houston area. So those will look similar, but it's gonna be a completely different model depending on this. And in this case, just to take you back a little bit of history, there was a time in 2007, pre the Great Recession, as they called it, where we had districts that were growing in double digits in student counts, 10%, double digits in tax base, 10% or higher. And then all of a sudden, the recession hit, and they started growing at 1% or 2%. Well, we gotta protect ourselves against that type of environment, too, and that's why we take a methodical approach of issuing bonds over each and every year as we get data back in more crystal ball. For your district, you're growing, and I think your demographic study has you growing your ADA in a 6% probably to their mid-range model, and they probably give you a higher end of whatever, 7% and lower mark. So that's the basis with which we will use your average daily attendance growth, and it is a key component to our model, because we are paid on the number of students that we have in this district, because our tax base is below a certain level, so state funding kicks in. So it is a key component. We will use a range here, like we did last time, probably 5%, 7%, and 6% to come up with a capacity number. And there are a dozen different parameters to go into, not just average daily attendance and tax base. We also have to assume an interest rate, which we tend to be conservative, so that we're not over-leveraged, if you will, the next time we need to evaluate. In your case, 7% is a pretty good number, 67%. I think that's what the demographic study showed. Any other questions on that?
One point, Doug, that I'd like to, I think we were, the fast-growth school district showed us around 17th, number 17 in the state's 40% of growth throughout the school districts in Texas. But I'd like for you, again, to share that anomaly that we talk about a lot of our situation, and what that actually means to us as a district.
Yeah, there's actually a fast-growth school coalition that is a group that has gotten together to...
We're members of that group.
Yes, to actually talk to legislatures about the unique difficulties and challenges that face a district that is growing. When you look at most all of those fast-growth school coalition districts, they don't receive any state funding. So in their bond model, we don't even worry about what their average daily attendance is, because it doesn't matter, it's all tax base. So there, we have to assume a tax base growth of 7% or 8% or 10% or whatever makes sense there. And then we have to pick a length of time, either three years, four years, five years, and that's gonna blend with the facility improvement needs and so forth. But we are the fastest-growing property poor district in the state of Texas. There's no, there's no statistics out there that calculate it, except guys like me who look at it and see it. But our tax base per student puts us in a pretty heavily state-funded situation, both on your maintenance and operating side and certainly on your bond side. And so you have unique challenges that the fast-growth districts, who are already talking about how difficult it is to open new schools and to hire the staff to do that and so forth, you have additional challenge that many of the others don't, and that is that we're contingent on state funding. And state funding has not increased in years at the level that they compensate for the number of students that we have. And there's a bullet point in here, but the bottom line is, is that we should generate a certain amount of revenue per student, and the state has not changed that level for years and years. And so this district gets less and less percentage of state aid for each new building you build with bonds. It's gone down, you can see the percentage go down over time. And without the state going in and reinvesting in districts like this, and raising that level to where they go back to paying the same percentage that they did three years ago, or five years ago, or 10 years ago, it makes it that much more challenging. And one of the things that I talk about in the slide is, so far, you have done a remarkable job of keeping up with growth as a property poor school district. And property poor just means that we don't have the commercial base that some of our other growers have. We're building it on rooftops, and rooftops aren't enough. We need the commercial development, and it's coming, but it's not there yet. Until it comes in significant ways, we will continue to be reliant on state aid that continues percentage-wise to go down for us.
That's the reason we wanted to maximize the amount of state aid to receive the tax ratification election.
Exactly, exactly. And that is a key component. You've done it with the tax ratification election, and you've done it with your bond model. In fact, we just picked up a new instructional facility allotment award that will help us in the next assessment of bond capacity. It's not gonna change your tax rate or anything like that, but what it will change is we now can access more money. Now, that doesn't change the fact that I lose sleep tonight and my hair is turning gray by the minute, because so far, we have done a remarkable job of being able to build the facilities that you need and keep up without falling behind in the facilities, because you don't have the financial wherewithal and capacity. But I never promised what the future is, and we're right at the cusp now of assessing, we're filling out the 83 million left that we have to issue, but we're right now going into the next stages of trying to blend what your facility needs are by your demographic study with what your financial capacity is. And up until this point, we've done pretty good. The last one was 173 million, we're digesting that very good, you're building those facilities. But my worry for you without legislative assistance is that at some point, you're gonna tell me we need 10 schools, and I tell you we have financing for five. And that's where I lose sleep at night. Now, we haven't gotten there, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna make everyone else not sleep good, wait till I have a report, but so far, we've been able to do it, I hope we're able to do it this next time. But the TRE and the things that you've done administratively have been key to that success, not only on your operating side, but on your bond model side. Because I do have some districts, I have some districts who are using their tax ratification election and monies not to hire new teachers for the classroom and things like that, turn the air conditioning on in the new facilities and so forth. I've got them using that money to help us with the bond side. And so far, we haven't been able to do that, which is a very, very good thing. So you are maximizing state funding on the bond side, you're maximizing on the tax ratification side, and we really need legislation to help particularly on our bond side to raise to what they call the evolization level. It should go up as the state pays a smaller percentage of years today. But we do have, digesting the 83 million, again, we're right on target, all the numbers look great. The concluding remarks are on that last page, and it kind of summarizes what I mentioned there, that we'll continue to face challenges as a fast-growing district with less tax base per student than the other top growth suburban districts. If your tax base is growing faster than your student count, that was one of the first statistics, so we've become less and less reliant on state aid, but nevertheless, we still are reliant on state aid where others are not, and until we get out of that, then we will have some challenges. As I say, you've met the needs with your financial wherewithal in the past. The last bullet point is here in the near future, we're gonna start putting together those types of reports, presumably, May of 2018 is the time that you have to have an election to replenish, to then begin the next facility needs that you have as you're finishing up the construction of these that you planned for, and that's what we're gonna work with your staff on in terms of getting new numbers as part of that planning process. And the third bullet point there talks about the decline in the state percentage. I actually gave you some numbers there. It's declined from 55% to about 28% state share of your bond payments over the last 10 years. And that's quite frankly a shame, because you should continue to receive state assistance at the same percentage as you grow, because you have more students, you have more schools to operate, and so forth, but without them raising that number. And it's not that hard to do, right? Because it's reinvesting. If their money that's going into those programs is declining, all we are asking is you to reinvest that money back into it so that we can build elementary school number 11, number 12, and so forth, at the same manner that we did number 10, number 9, and number 8. So with that, any questions that we have on where we're on? In November or December timeframe, you'll probably hear back from us. At that time, we'll be looking at authorization for you to delegate the authorization to the administration to proceed with the sale and issuance of the next installment of bonds. Those bonds will be sold in January, February timeframe, and that'd probably be up to the 83 million that you have authorized with an issue. We'll give you a report at that time on that sale and issuance.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, Doug. Item eight on the agenda is consent calendar, consisting of consideration amendments, consideration of financial reports, consideration of purchasing reports, consideration of personnel reports, consideration of maximum class size exception, consideration of approval list, approval of list of those certified to appraise under the approved alternative appraisal systems, and consideration of...
Item 8 on the agenda is consent calendar, consisting of consideration amendments, consideration of financial reports, consideration of purchasing reports, consideration of personnel reports, consideration of maximum class size exception, consideration of approval list, approval of list of those certified to appraise under the approved alternative appraisal system, and consideration of donations, and consideration of policy update 105. Are there any questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar?
No. Second.
Me.
Alan. Motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion of vote, we take in all of the favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion is approved. Item 9 on the agenda is consideration of voluntary exit incentive agreement for New Caney High School. Dr. Franklin.
The board should have received a sample of what we're proposing for the voluntary exit incentive agreement. The changes were pretty much cosmetic changes. I would like to point out a couple of, the period for the exit incentive will start in December. So that's a, that's a change. And one of the things that we've done is also add a year to the number of years before they're eligible for the $5,000 incentive. And that's really been the cost savings and really makes sense in terms of what we want for people to be here in their tenure before they're eligible for that incentive. So the changes are in front of you. I think it's clear that the board, where the district has an interest in doing this. And the interest is making sure that we have the opportunity to recruit teachers early. Without this incentive, teachers may, teachers and other people under contract may not submit their reservations until late May or June. That puts us at a competitive disadvantage in a growth district in recruiting teachers that are available when they're, especially in some of our shortage areas, like elementary, bilingual, math, and science. This really gives us an opportunity to know what our staffing needs are early in the process. So for your consideration, we recommend that you approve the agreement as presented.
Any questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the voluntary exit incentive agreement for New Caney High School? Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion of vote, we take in all of the favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion is approved. Thank you, Dr. Franklin. Item 10 on the agenda is consideration of application for a low-attendance day waiver for New Caney High School on October 7, 2016.
The state allows us, if we have a day where a campus or the district has an attendance rate that is 10% or more below the average attendance rate for the year before, that we can ask for a waiver for that day. We had such a day on October 7 at New Caney High School. The attendance was more than 10% low on that day, and so we're asking for your approval for us to apply for that waiver. And what that does is allows that day to be taken off our average daily attendance. Basically, you don't get hurt by that. And the state allows that if there's a weather, health, or safety concern.
Can you tell us why the attendance was low?
Oh, wow! It was...
Safety concern.
Nice, nice answer.
Safety concern.
I think I found it.
What if it's something like winter coming up? Does that affect any, if we have any days like that?
Has no concern with that at all. It just allows us to take that day out of the average daily attendance.
We don't lose future opportunities.
No, has nothing to do with that at all. This isn't one of those special events, and if they approve the waiver, then we get to just...
There's not a cap on it?
No, there's no cap on how many of these you do. You know, obviously, it has to be one of those concerns, weather, health, or safety. And we hope there's a lot of those.
I still can't believe this is a thing. Are there any questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the application for low-attendance day waiver for New Caney High School for October 7, 2016? Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion of vote, we take in all of the favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
My kids want to...
Motion is approved. Item 11 on the agenda is consideration to award construction contract for New Early College High School to Pepper Lawson in Bond 2015.
Okay, we've got, we've got nine bids on this project. It was all very tight. Most of the contractors were considered to be very high-quality contractors. Pepper Lawson, I'd not hold it myself, but I know a few people have, and always got a very good reputation. We're about $2 million older budget on this, mostly because we just, the administration wanted a nicer building than we had set the original budget for. So if we covered all that, the money that we had saved over from the previous projects and bids, and we're still in the bottom line, we're ready to go and black on all that. So that's why we're going to do it, so we can get started on this.
Any questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to award construction contract for New Early College High School to Pepper Lawson in Bond 2015? Second. Got a second?
Yes, sir.
Motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion of vote, we take in all of the favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. And I abstain. Motion is approved. Item 12 on the agenda is consideration to award consultant agreement to Wetlands Professional for maintenance and evaluation of 52 acres located on Sorders Road, Bond 2015. Gates.
This is the property we bought, 52 acres for future high schools down the southern end. The whole east side of this property is watered with a pretty big drainage ditch. So over the years, since the property had been taken care of, a lot of the small tributaries and stuff, it's feeded, it's overgrown, filled up, filled in. So basically, this is, this company will clean it, take care of it, but then the regulations that were passed by the EPA, Clean Air Act, basically, is to keep the property from turning into a wetlands. If it ever gets in that direction, then the corporate engineers come into play, and it could have a pretty big effect on what we do on the building. So that's what this guy will do. This company will maintain it, clean it, they'll give you a special report, so communicate when you get ready to build the building and move on with its construction.
Is this a TNRCC or...?
No, I don't think so. This was recommended by a real estate agent.
Where do the reports go to, do you know?
We don't know until we get started with it. It'll go to the city of Houston, because it's certainly in their jurisdiction. So we have to deal with that flood control, plus some of the county's flood control. So if it ever, you know, kind of what happens, there's some legislation out there that will kind of back off the EPA, but it's still in court. So they kind of insist about some of this, say, overreaching, if they're kind of for control on the whole that you have in your piece of property. So that's, since that's still a litigation, this is kind of some insurance of that, whenever those decisions are made, we don't get stuck in this kind of problem.
Do they provide and maintain SW3P, or is that necessary?
Not sure. I know that.
Stormwater pollution prevention?
No, no. What they're going to do, they're only allowed, they can't ever get down to the roots on them, so they can, they'll clean out whatever ditches are there, they'll keep and mow, they'll take care of any bushes and trees.
Just strictly ground made?
Yes, all around. And they record it and document it so that when we do get ready, they can provide reports to the county that we've taken care of this, basically. So we don't have the little palmettos running all over the place, which is our first example. And there's already a few out there. But if we have done anything, we have recorded, they didn't start, we're still in the safe zone, the safe.
Are there any questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to award the consultant agreement to Wetlands Professional for maintenance and evaluation of the 52 acres located on Sorders Road for Bond 2015? Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion of vote, we take in all of the favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
Aye.
And I abstain. Motion is approved. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 8:35 PM.
I wanted to personally tell you, Mr. Johnson, how much we appreciate him. His service began in 2010 with the district, and we have appreciated every drop of blood he's given this district over the last six years. And we want to be special, give you your own official gavel. So there you go, you got your own gavel now. Did I say a few words?
No.
I forced him to.
Hey, thank you very much. I can, I can say that it has truly been an honor to serve this district and serve on this board. And, you know, I got on this board in 2010 without an agenda, without anything to prove. There was nothing that, that I wanted to change, there was nothing that I thought needed doing differently. It was simply a love of my community and a love of the school district and seeing a need to serve. And I think that that is something that everyone should do. You know, we've been here a long time. My wife and I are both graduates of New Caney High School. Our parents are graduates of New Caney High School. We have kids that are graduates of New Caney High School. And I do recognize that there is now another high school here in town, too. And, you know, it's just a, this is home. So service was very easy. And I, so I thank to, to my fellow board members and new board members coming on, that is the best advice I can give. Do it out of service, for no other reason. The people of this district are some of the best people that I've ever had the opportunity to work with. I did come in with some frequency notions about how, you know, school districts should run like a business, right? Because I'm a business guy, I thought that that's just why. Well, because the state of Texas is stupid, that's why. And it just doesn't work that way. But this district does more with less than just about anywhere else around. And that's not an opinion, that's a fact. We get less money per kid than most of the districts around here, certainly comparable-sized districts. And our district always runs a balanced budget. Our district often has surplus. Our district builds new facilities, beautiful facilities. Our district spends money on kids. And I can honestly say that the people that work at this district, and that starts at the top of leadership, Mr. Franklin, sometimes you upset people, sometimes parents get upset, sometimes community people don't like decisions that are made. But I can guarantee you, one thing that I've noticed time and time again in this district is that everything is done with one thought in mind, and that is, how does it affect kids? And that's how you know you're doing it right. And that's why leaving here and, you know, and not running again for this position was an easy choice, because we have a great board, good people, that guarantee you, when they make a decision, that is the first thing on their mind is, how does it affect kids? So support your board members, you know, because they support you, guaranteed. So thank you very much, I appreciate it. You know, have some...